Okay. Any response to that, Mr. Bray?
I would move to call for the question.
Okay, there's been a motion and a second to call for the question. Is that a vote?
You need to take a voice vote on whether to call the question, in which case it would go back to Councilman Mahalovich's motion.
Right, okay. All in favor of calling the question? Please make a move by aye.
Aye.
Okay, the question has been called.
You should probably ask for opposed.
I'm sorry?
You should probably ask for opposed.
Oh, yeah, I guess I better. Is there anyone opposed? It sounded like everyone said yes.
I wasn't sure.
Thank you. Keep me on my toes. Okay, we've called for the question, and the question is an amendment that, to amend 2013-8 by adding Director of Planning and Protective Services after the words "Fire Chief." Roll call? Voice vote, okay. Voice vote for amendment?
You know, I'd probably do a roll call, just since there's some question about how people are going to vote, probably.
Okay, roll call, please.
So to make it clear, this simply removes the amendment, correct? And then we vote on the bill as a whole?
No, this is voting to add Director of Planning and Protective Services. The motion wasn't withdrawn. We called for the question, and now we are voting on the amendment as presented by Mr. Mahal.
Right. So this is just whether or not, a yes vote will add Planning and Protective Services to the folks who have to live inside the city limits. A no vote would leave the bill as it is.
And then we vote on the bill?
Then you still have to vote on the bill, and maybe a Hussey amendment.
Okay, roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
No.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
No.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
No.
Schulte?
No.
Scrivner?
Aye.
It's a tie. It can't be a tie. I guess it can. Okay, Mr. Parliamentarian, it's a tie.
Motion does not pass.
It does not pass, okay.
Uh-oh, I'm getting a strange stare. Oh, he's whipping out the charter. I don't think that the, well, I'm glad you got it. I don't believe the chair gets to break the tie, does he?
Normally, the mayor would vote to break a tie.
This is a screwball deal that there was a charter amendment that changed this very answer.
That was changed by the voters.
Yeah, that the president does not have the ability to vote twice.
They amended the charter.
I'll, uh, I believe that was the Edie Vogel rule. We'll give Mr. Nicholas a chance to remember when he was an attorney, I guess. I should always bring a charter. I don't know why I didn't bring my charter. I should, I guess I can pull it up on the... Alright, I'll look it up.
Let's take a five-minute recess, and you check the charter on that. Five minutes, it's 25 till be back here 22. Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order, and we're going to ask Mr. Hilford to give us, render his opinion.
Hey, thank you. The charter kind of addresses it, but not real clearly. And it says that the mayor, but not the presiding chair, can, may only vote in a tie. So we had to kind of revert back to Roberts' rules, which clearly says that the chairman, when voting with the majority, cannot vote twice first in a tie, so.
Okay, so...
So the motion dies because it did not receive a majority.
Okay, so the amendment dies, and the Director of Planning and Protective Services will not be added after the words "Fire Chief."
Correct.
So we are now ready to either discuss, any further discussion on the original motion? If not, then we will have a roll call.
Mr. Chairman.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hussey.
A couple of points. You know, we're kind of back to the original motion. I can offer forth an amendment to remove Public Works Director. I think we'll have the same conversation, and I'm happy to put people on the spot to make a vote on that. Or, I would maybe recommend Councilman Carroll consider pulling this back on the informal to continue conversation. I understand our point about we can make some progress forward tonight, and do some certain things, but ultimately, a lot of those positions that we're talking about, they're not immediate vacancies necessarily. Or, if we leave it as is and continue the conversation, it allows us to still have the broader conversation about, I heard some opinions expressed that, you know, some might think that all directors should have to live within the city. And I think maybe the status quo to continue the conversation for a couple more weeks wouldn't be a bad thing. I will add one point to Councilman Scrivner's point earlier about the constituent expressing that it's important to have the people that make the rules and regulations live within the city. My answer back would be they already do. It's the 10 of us sitting around the table here. We make the rules and regulations the people in the city have to live by. We just, a lot of times, make them based off of the advice and recommendation of the staff. Now, I know that's not, you know, you can find, you know, areas where maybe that's not exactly true at times, or whatever, but ultimately, that's what we're here to do. We have a requirement to live within the city. We appoint the people to certain boards and commissions, like the Board of Adjustment and Planning and zoning, that have some greater authority as well. Those appointments go through us. We're the elected people. We're the ones that are required to live within the city. So I would consider to hear if Councilman Carroll is interested in maybe pulling that. If not, I'm going to put forth the amendment to have this conversation continue.
Mr. Branch?
It's been, it's been shown pretty obvious that nobody's really happy with this. I just, I think the best thing to do at this particular point may be Ms. Carroll's idea of pulling it back, putting it on the informal calendar, and re-looking at it again.
If that were the case, I probably would simply withdraw it. I almost hate to do that, because I know the previous council spent three times at administration getting this far. So there is a part of me that almost thinks I should bring it forward, at least because it is an improvement over what we currently have. And I know we, Finance Director is one that really got us where we're going to with, kind of bringing the discussion up again. I mean, Finance, Human Resources, Parks and Rec. I'm open, honestly, to what the council thinks. I just know that we, we did get, at least to this draft, through a lot of meetings with the previous council. And even if this does pass, or fail, either way, it'll still get us to a starting point at Administration, or if another committee prefers it. So I feel like at least it's getting us somewhere. And maybe, it might be good to gauge, to see a vote and see where are we, because then when we do take it back to Administration, we can say the council as a whole either liked this or didn't. And honestly, when it goes back to Administration, which it will regardless of the outcome, I think we can, we can definitely make any changes. So there is a part of me that thinks it would at least get us a temperature of the council for when we do discuss it really in detail. And I really almost think it shouldn't be Admin. I almost think it needs to be a committee of the whole, as I'm starting to think about the three-month-long discussion at Admin, and how we can really get it to everybody, because there's some pretty strong opinions. So that could be left up to everyone. But for that reason, and knowing we can still completely change it, I think I'll go ahead and leave it on the table, and just see what the outcome is. And it's not urgent, anyway. Thank you.
Let me ask Mr. Nicholas a question here. We are currently under a hiring freeze. Is there any plans, are there any plans to hire? When's the earliest that you would see a director position being filled?
I don't see any immediate plans to hire any director's position, barring, of course, one of them may screw up or something. Right now, I would not anticipate we would be hiring any of these positions in several months.
So...
Certainly not till the end of this fiscal year.
Okay, alright. I think Mr. Hussey had raised his hand first, and then we'll come to you, Mr. Bray.
I would make a motion for the amendment that's been distributed to delete Director of Public Works from 2013-8.
Okay, the motion is to amend 2013-8 by deleting Director of Public Works, correct? Is there a second for that motion? Alright, we've got a motion and a second. Mr. Bray, you had your hand up. No longer a valid comment, okay. Is there any other discussion or questions about the motion as presented? Alright, we've already had the discussion? Okay. So this, this is a voice vote? Or do, I think we'll go roll call, because we did earlier. But we could have done a voice vote, correct? Okay, we're, we, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Nay.
Carroll?
No.
Graham?
Nay.
Henry?
No.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Nay.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
We don't need another five-minute break for that.
I think we have another tie. The motion fails. We are back to the main motion.
I call for the question of the main motion.
Second. Alright, we have a motion and a second, which means that the question has been called. It's not debatable, so roll call.
Probably worth pointing out, this is the main bill as submitted to you, which is what you're voting on.
Why don't you read it again?
Voting. I'm sorry, you're right, I'm out of order. Yeah, we'd have to vote on calling the question.
Motion to call the question. Oh, I thought we already did that. Maybe not. I got, I got mixed up. Okay, we've got a first and a second to call the question. I'm sorry, so, do we, roll call that? Well, let's not. Let's do it, voice vote. All in favor of calling the question, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It's unanimous. We, the question has been called now. We'll do a roll call vote. And did someone ask that that be read again? Mr. Carlos asked it to be read again.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending the Personnel Policy Manual Regarding Residency of City Employees.
Okay, everyone clear on what we're voting on? Roll call, please.
Branch?
No.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
No.
Scrivner?
No.
Okay, motion passes 7-3. Very good. And we will move on to 2013-9.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with Post Builders Incorporated for the Jefferson City Fire Station Number Three project.
And that is Mr. Marash.
Thank you. As clerk indicated, it's a construction contract with Post Builders for the new fire station three, which is located on Highway 179 near the Cherry Creek development. The cost of the contract is $2,283,000. City staff would recommend approval.
Mr. Henry?
Mr. Marash, could you please just indicate where those funds, where those funds originate from, please?
Yes, the funds come from the half-cent capital improvement sales tax.
Any other questions or comments? Mr. Bray?
The, that amount is for the construction of the building itself?
Correct.
And that includes the hardening?
Oh, yes. It also includes the hardening and backup 911 center.
Does it include...
911 backup and computer backup center.
Does it include the computer and the equipment that goes in the 911?
I don't believe it's the equipment. No, I'm, Mr. Betts could probably answer that better, but the brackets and everything are there for those, but I believe they're being moved over.
Do, is there a, already a budget? Is there already a budget for the hardening of the, and the 911 equipment? And also, is there a budget for the furnishing of the fire station? A separate budget?
I can't, I'll, I'll let Matt, I'll go back to Matt for the furnishing of the fire station, but as far as the 911 center equipment and the backup computer room, we already have all of that equipment currently in place at different locations throughout the city. We're just trying to allocate it into a hardened facility, so that it's in a, a good, solid backup site. So as far as furnishing the fire station, I'm not sure.
Alright. And do you know about the furnishing?
I'll try to tag-team with Mr. Turner a little bit, but in the budget, if you look at the bill summary, the funds remaining in those accounts for the fire station, $117,000. I think we indicated that, you know, those would be any contingency funds, such as we encounter a lot of rock, or something like that while excavating. You know, that would be paid out of there, but it could also be used for furnishings as well.
Sure. Is it, do I recall correctly that the bid, it came in underbid? Ever so slightly, but...
Yeah, ever so slightly of the engineer's estimate, and the city staff did the estimate on the site work.
Alright, thanks.
Mr. Turner, would you like to comment on furnishings?
I think the whole time that we've talked about this project, we've estimated with Peckham and Wright that the total cost would be somewhere in the ballpark. Mr. Administrator wasn't at 2.4. So the entire time that we've talked about this project, we've stayed firm on that, and specifying that with Peckham and Wright.
Now, will you be, Mr. Turner, will you be moving a certain amount of equipment, I presume? Or will there be, when I say equipment, I guess I'm thinking of furnishings and things like that. Is it, is it the intent? Are you saying the 2.4 would include any new furnishings that might be required?
I believe the Administrator and I have talked on several occasions about that funding, along with the sale of the existing fire station number three, putting it on the market, and recouping some of that cost to offset that.
Has there been any, any forethought, or anything, any estimates of what that station might be worth? Do we have any, any idea at all?
We have gotten that information, and we'd be glad to share that with you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on either side here? If not, okay, Mr. Mahalovich?
I'm a little confused with the FFNE. FFNE. So, does, it includes all the millwork, right? And all the other attachments, but not furnishings of the firehouse?
Yeah. The furnishings typically are a separate budget, like you might purchase your own, I guess, coffee maker, for example. We'd go out to Walmart and purchase a coffee maker, I assume.
So do we, I'm sorry, I might have missed this. Do we have an estimate of what the FFNE should be? Or what it will be to infill this building?
The architect did give us an estimate. I would still defer to Mr. Turner. I think it was in the, you know, $100,000, $150,000 range, if I recall, but obviously, not being a fireman, I'll defer to him.
If I recall, Councilman, it was $125,000. And the reason we left that out of the bid itself for the contractor to do that, they, they felt that we could do that ourselves, and manage that through Peckham and Wright, and have a savings not going through the contractor.
I was just going to echo what Chief Turner had said, and that is that the sale of the old building was always part of the deal, and it will be more than enough to cover the costs. And actually, when you add that all in and get down to the bottom line, we're actually, we are below what we originally expected.
Mr. Henry?
And this can either go to the city administrator or Chief Turner. So at this point, I guess my question is, just the bottom line. Is the fire department going to come back and ask for money for furnishings, for the fire, for the firehouse?
I could say that our intent has always been that we've estimated that at $2.4 million, and it's our goal to be under that amount. Including furnishings.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mahalovich?
How many years have we been planning this?
This is the, I think we're going on, if you look back at the fire station study, it's been 10 years. We've been in, we've hired Peckham and Wright to design and process on this station two and a half years ago, I believe.
Do you feel like you got what you needed out of this building? Is this going to be, all the voices have been heard, all the planning's been done, and you feel like this is, this is what you need to the best of your all's ability to communicate to Peckham and Wright?
I think we've had plenty of time to do that. During that process, Peckham and Wright's worked with us. We've traveled throughout Missouri, looking at several projects that, you know, Peckham and Wright has designed themselves, including stations in Columbia, Boonville, and Sedalia that's under construction right now. So I think we've made the right choice. Chief Rennick was very adamant about making sure that we maintained the integrity of the design that we've brought forward, and that's my intent.
Demonstrated to us that there are similar buildings in other cities that, that look similar, and, and, so I'm, I'm a big supporter. The FFNE kind of caught me by surprise a little bit, but I'll tell you, based on the planning, and the length that you've, the deliberations you've went through, I'm, I'm for the building, but I'm not for change orders. So I will not approve any change orders beyond this contract here as we proceed. So you have your contingency to work with. I feel like our, our budget's set. The FFNE has been planned for, but I'll, I'll look pretty negative on any change orders.
I think that's my, my intent also, is that we've, we've stressed with Peckham and Wright, and Mr. Marash can attest that, you know, during this process, the design of the building is what we want. So I don't anticipate any change orders unless, unless we hit some god-awful...
The way, I do want to comment on that. There is, the way the bid is set up, rock is outside of the base bid on this. So any rock excavation, we've done a geotech investigation, it shouldn't be a whole lot, but there is potential. Now, that would come through as a change order, likely the city administrator being his authority to sign it with that, within that 117. So I think you, what I thought I really heard you say was above the 117, yeah.
Any further comments or questions, Mr. Park?
Just have a quick question. As far as me, as a new city council person, I don't know about Hussey or Councilman Branch. I would love to see the preliminary designs of the new fire station as soon as possible.
I'll personally see to that.
Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Roll call, please.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
I know, Mr. Turner, you thought that would never, ever happen, but it has. The bill passed. And now, when will it start, Matt? When will construction start?
Obviously, we'll have to get with our contractor and look at that. He'll have to get his insurances together and things of that nature, but it should start very soon. And probably was going to bring up with Mr. Nicholas and Turner, and Mr. Turner, if they wanted to have some kind of a groundbreaking or something, we'd be glad to organize that.
We are looking, just to give you all a heads up, because we are running kind of short on time, that we are looking, the first week of June during fire school, we thought it would be an appropriate time to do a groundbreaking on this.
We were, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Turner. The Friday afternoon of June 7th, I believe it is, correct?
I'd have to look at my calendar to see what day we...
And, and the...
We'll send out invitations.
Construction time, what's the estimate?
I believe it was, I wanted to say 300 calendar days, so next spring, you know, we'd be moving in. We tried to time that out outside of winter time, so to give the guys an opportunity to move into it in decent weather.
Okay, thanks to all. Next bill, 2013-10.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, declaring certain property to be surplus and authorizing the disposal of said property.
Mr. Marash?
Yeah, this basically is just the, basically surplus in our mini excavator that was just purchased previously in the, in the agenda. Basically a trade-in.
Okay, any questions or comments? Roll call, please.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Okay, the bill passes. 2013-11 was taken up under Item 6, so we move to 2013-12.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, accepting and approving the final subdivision plat of Brickyard Terrace Subdivision, a subdivision of the City of Jefferson, Missouri.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you. This ordinance approves a final subdivision plat for Brickyard Terrace Subdivision. You'll recall that the, this property was approved for planned unit development in December. And the six fourplex buildings are part of this plan, as are two single-family lots. There's also an additional three single-family lots that are zoned, RS, for single-family residential. And here's the plat that's shown up on the screen. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions? We've seen this before. Any questions or comments? If not, roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
The bill passes. 2013-13.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, amending Section 19401, Schedule J, Parking Prohibited, Subparagraph A, Streets and Highways of the Code of the City of Jefferson pertaining to Karen Drive located in Brickyard Terrace Subdivision.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you. What we like to do with new subdivisions is include the on-street parking restrictions at the time the subdivision is approved. That way, there's no question about which side of the street parking will be allowed. So in this case, on Karen Drive, the parking will be allowed on the north side of the street. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Ms. McMillan? If not, roll call, please.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bill passes. 2013-14.
An ordinance of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a grant agreement with MoDOT for public transit operating assistance.
Mr. Marash?
Yes, as the clerk indicated, it's a transit operating grant administered through MoDOT. The dollar amount's $4,983. The actual period of this grant is from July of 2012 till June 30th of 2013. Another similar dollar amount come in in the next fiscal year of the state, so we can be expecting that.
Okay, any questions or comments on this bill for Mr. Marash? If not, roll call, please.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Okay, the bill passes. Item 17 informal calendar, I don't believe there's anything on the informal calendar. 18 resolutions. Resolution RS 2013-11.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri, authorizing the mayor's signature and submittal of the request for release of funds and certification for a project at 614 East McCarty Street.
Ms. McMillan?
Thank you. The 614 East McCarty Street project is included in Community Development Block Grant Program for Demolition. And because we need to request funds, release of funds and certification, that currently requires the signature of the chief elected official. So that's what this resolution does. It allows that signature to occur, so that we can request the funds.
Okay, thank you. We'll need a motion to accept this resolution, or to...
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to accept the resolution as presented. Any discussion? Voice vote? Roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Abstain.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. And RS 2013-12, Ms. McMillan.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor's signature and submittal of the request for release of community development block grant funds and certification to the Department of Housing and Urban Development for homeowner support programs for program year 2013.
Ms. McMillan.
Thank you. Again, this... These homeowner support programs are included in the Community Development Block Grant Program that the city operates. And in order to have access for those funds, certain procedures have to occur, including the environmental review. And so that certification, all of that work has been done, and this resolution allows the mayor's signature on this document that goes to HUD, and it allows us to have access to those CDBG funds.
Thank you. I believe you and I have discussed that you're going to bring to the Public Works Committee a... An ordinance where we can go ahead and authorize the mayor so we don't have to do one of these resolutions every time.
Yes.
So that is something that we're working on. So anyway, I need a motion and a second.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept the resolution. Is there any discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Henry? Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
And the resolution passes. Moving on to number 19, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. We have Mr. James Rennick regarding Missouri State Penitentiary Prison Site. Mr. Rennick. Thank you for your patience, sir.
Pardon me, sir.
I said, "Thank you for your patience. You've been here a long time."
Oh, well, thank you, sir. Are you kin to Mark?
Uh, don't think so.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I interrupted you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, sir. My name is James R. Richard Rennick. They call me JR Rennick. State Penitentiary, they call me JR. And I'm here for the preservation of the prison. There's a lot of things... I had a big clipboard. I had everything set up self-sufficient. Wouldn't have cost nobody. I went out there a month ago and Supermax was gone. That blew the whole project, 'cause I could've made enough revenue off of that to house overpopulated inmates, the federal inmates, to possibly pay for all the archaeology digs. I like to be in charge of that. It cost $470-some dollars just to get the paperwork from the state, and I had to go through, like, through the CIA just to get that. And there's a lot of things I came across. But I'm here to say Jeff City is the biggest loser in the citizens of the city and the state of the citizens and the Department of Corrections. The home history part where Corrections got started is being tore down, whittled down. The city has to regain... I seen the paper, there was 143 acres. When you pull up the tracks of the railroad, it goes back to the landlords. And everything in that prison, the people made that prison from Jeff City. There's heroes. Not one place there that's got anything to... The Alamo's got better things in front of the Alamo. Have you ever been there? Travis, Bowie, Davy Crockett? Well, there's plenty of unsung heroes I saw. I think I saw four in my time in 17 years over there. And I can give you all a tour. You wouldn't quit what I saw in 17 years and how it worked on the inside, 'cause you couldn't get no one to go on the inside. You always wonder what went on in there. The whole thing, as far as I'm concerned, is a graveyard. I figured out from 1827 to 1930, let's go that far. Where did they bury the bodies? The loved ones took away, but where did they bury all the other people? The baseball field wouldn't have been big enough. So I figured there was two big gold smokestacks over there, and one of them was an incinerator. And I bet if I did the archaeology work, I'd find all kinds of human remains. Ball field, that was though. One time, we found a ball and chain. There's plenty of stuff underneath that ball field. I like to do the work to it. One time, they... In old Civil War, there's a dump site that goes back to the Civil War when they dug out the rock for the quarry, the walls. They... Wounded in Vietnam, I got the deflexia, I kinda forget. They... There's plenty of stuff there from the hospitals back in the Civil War. I like to do the archaeology work there.
Mr. Rennick, with all due respect, I know you waited for a long time, but the council has established a three-minute time limit on...
Am I over it already?
Yeah, you actually...
Boy, they said it would go fast.
We let you go about an extra minute, and I apologize for cutting you off.
Well, okay, I didn't know. What I'm saying is, we can't let this slip away. If we do this, you won't have a steamboat out there like Washington, Missouri. You won't... They can develop the cities. The only people can develop the old buildings that make them tourist attractions. The whole place couldn't be... This is the only thing you got. You don't have no landmark in Jeff City. It's the state owns it all. Put a stop to it. Help me out. If I have to run for mayor to do it, I'll put a toll road gate on it in every city-state just to get the governor to know exactly. I want a hillside for the convention center, and I want that prison preserved. I have the heart and soul in it, people, and I need other people like you, people that help me.
Mr. Rennick, thank you very much for your comments. I really appreciate your passion, and I agree with you. We need to do all we can.
Well, this is all I can do. I'm running pretty thin, and I did the best I could. But you're all my last hope.
Thank you, sir. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions for Mr. Rennick or any comments? Okay, thank you again, sir. Moving on to Item 20, Council and Staff Discussion of Presentation Topics. Is there any discussion? 21, New Business. 22, Unfinished Business. 23, Approval of Closed Session Minutes. I need a motion to approve the closed session minutes. Has everyone had a copy of them? Okay.
So moved.
So.
Got a motion and a second over here. Is that a voice vote?
Roll call.
Roll call, okay. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Okay, on Item 24, Pursuant to Section 610-021 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, the council... I'll entertain a motion for the council to go into closed session to discuss the following: Legal actions under Section 610-021 dot one. Is there a motion? We have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second to go into closed session. Any discussion? Voice vote? Or roll call vote?
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carol?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Nay.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schulte?
Aye.
Scrivner?